So, congratulations to Jamie Garvin, Sarah Lennon, Jessica Sullivan for Town Council, and Heather Altenberg, Elizabeth Siffries, and John Bolts for School Board. Moving on to the roll call by the Town Clerk, Deborah?
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Grennan?
Here.
Counselor Jordan?
Here.
Counselor Lennon?
Here.
Counselor McCoslin?
Here.
Counselor Ray?
Here.
And Counselor Sullivan?
Here. Thank you very much. We have a group of people leaving, so we'll give them just maybe a few seconds. So, moving on to item one is the election of the Town Council Chair. Is there a motion, please? Patty?
I move that we accept Molly McCoslin as the Chair of Town Council for the coming year.
Thank you, Patty. Is there a second? Caitlin? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, Molly.
Thank you.
And we will change seats.
Nice knowing you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is the quietest I've ever seen it in here. First of all, let me say thank you. I'm honored to be elected Chair of the Council. My thanks to my fellow Council members for their support, and I look forward to a productive and engaging year ahead. Also, welcome to new Council member Jamie Garvin, and welcome back to newly re-elected Council members Jessica Sullivan and Sarah Lennon. Congratulations to all. I'd also like to thank outgoing Council members Jim Walsh and Jamie Wagner for their service to the community. And next, it is my privilege to recognize and thank Counselor Ray for her long list of contributions to the town of Cape Elizabeth. After serving for eight years on the School Board, Kathy joined the Council, chairing the Ordinance Committee for two years, and representing our town as a delegate to the MMA Legislative Policy Committee. I've had the opportunity to work with Kathy for the last three years, first as a member of the Library Planning Committee, and more recently as a member of the Library Building Committee. Kathy was re-elected to her second term on the Council last year, and it's been a pleasure serving under her leadership as Council Chair in 2015. Kathy, thank you for a job well done. We have a small gift for you acknowledging your service and your dedication to the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Molly. Molly asked me to open it, so I will. It's always a little awkward when you do this, but, oh, how lovely. Most people don't know, but I love clocks, and my husband's probably at home going, "Oh, no, not another one." But anyway, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Just want to say a couple words. Please do. I will be brief. I'm usually brief. But anyway, I'd like to thank you for the honor of being this year's Chair. I couldn't have done it without the support of the Town Council and the superior Town staff, including Mike McGovern. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Shall we move along? Yes, Jessica?
With your permission, I'd like to say a few words.
Please do.
You know, there are different styles of leadership and chairmanship. Kathy came to her years Chairman of Town Council with more skills than most because she'd been elected twice Chairman of the School Board during her eight years there. And it's easy to see why they elected her twice. She quietly attended her duties as Chairman and always made sure that the Council was duly informed of any issues it needed to face. And as with any year, we had our share. She approached all the issues with honesty, transparency, and integrity. She never shied away from tough issues, and her guiding principles always led her to the same questions: what are the facts, and what is best for the town as a whole? I think that it's been particularly serendipitous that during this year, Cape Elizabeth's 250th anniversary, our town has been led by the Chairman, who is a direct descendant of Reverend Robert Jordan, the first settler of Cape Elizabeth. It's been a privilege and a pleasure. Thank you, Kathy.
Would anybody else like to say anything? Okay. Thanks again, Kathy. Shall we move on to Town Council reports and correspondence? Does anyone have anything that they would like to bring up? Nope? Wonderful. We'll move on to the Finance Committee report. We're in transition right now. I think the manager is going to speak to us tonight on the update on the finance.
Thank you, Chair McCoslin.
You're welcome.
Once a year, we ask, there's a provision in the Council rules that we ask the Chair of the Town Council, do they prefer to be known as Chairman, Chair, or Chairperson, or something else? And you decide at Town Council Chair.
Correct.
I'll try to remember that.
Thank you.
So, congratulations. I do want to indicate on the finances, we're in pretty good shape. The dashboard shows that particularly excise taxes, people continued to buy a lot of new cars, it's up almost 9% over what it was a year ago. Revenue sharing is up by 27%, but the way the state system works, we expect that'll be level at the end of the year. While building permit income is down, it is still tracking within budget. Cable franchise fee, we won't know for a while. And Portland had like gift shop sales. The fiscal year goes from July to June, and while now we've closed for the season, I think it's important to note that we're already at 93% of budget, and we still have, you know, May and June to be open, so that looks good. Expenses, you know, things are going well. No one has yet asked, "Are you running over the Public Works budget because of the snow?" But let's hope we don't get those questions coming up. Overall, things are in good shape.
Good. Anyone have any questions? Yes, Jessica?
The, I don't have it open, but I was reviewing it. There's 115% over on Public Works due to the tall ships this summer. Wasn't that the notation?
We were, I think that's on the fuel.
Or is that on fuel? Fuel, gasoline?
That was last year, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. What number, I'm trying to see what number, I'm not getting the 115%?
Yeah, 115.
Yeah.
These were the gas lines? Oh, that was the gasoline?
Yeah.
Okay, that wasn't the...
No, and if you look, that's the percentage compared to a year ago.
Okay.
And we're still dealing with very small overall percentages. We've spent 38% in that account. At the end of November, it should be 41%.
Okay.
So, it's a matter of timing of when deliveries come in.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? No? Thank you, Mike. Citizen opportunity for discussion of items not on the agenda. Do we have citizens who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, I'll move on. Town Manager's Monthly Report.
Yes, with the other work you have to do this evening, a brief report. I just want to join you in congratulating the continuing councilors, the new councilors, and indicate that, you know, I'm looking forward to your workshop this evening, to look forward to what the Council's goals are. I know all of the staff looks forward to working with you in implementing those goals. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Anything else?
No, that's it for tonight.
Great. Any questions for the manager? No? We'll move on to item number 2-2016, Adoption of Town Council Rules. Can I have a motion to accept the adoption of the Town Council rules?
I think we have maybe the minutes before that.
Did I skip that? Oh, Review of Draft Meeting Minutes. Thank you. That's from the November 4, 2015 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Questions? Comments? Corrections? Revisions? No?
Question, Molly?
Yes?
I want a procedure for the new councilors that were not on the Council at the last meeting. I know that there's no abstaining for votes, but I assume we just vote as if we were here, or...
I'm going to look to the manager for a tie on that.
There are certain things that one do. The term is ministerial responsibility.
Yep.
And, you know, for example, even if, like, for example, a liquor license, you oppose it, everyone still signs it because you signed it as the council group. The same with approving, you know, minutes of a meeting that you weren't at, you still vote on them as a ministerial responsibility.
All good? Any other questions? Discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? No? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Now, we'll move on to item number 2-2016, Adoption of Town Council Rules. Can I have a motion to accept the adoption of the Town Council rules?
I think we have maybe the minutes before that.
Did I skip that? Oh, Review of Draft Meeting Minutes. Thank you. That's from the November 4, 2015 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Questions? Comments? Corrections? Revisions? No?
Question, Molly?
Yes?
I want a procedure for the new councilors that were not on the Council at the last meeting. I know that there's no abstaining for votes, but I assume we just vote as if we were here, or...
I'm going to look to the manager for a tie on that.
There are certain things that one do. It's, the term is ministerial responsibility.
Yep.
And, you know, for example, even if, like, for example, a liquor license, you oppose it, everyone still signs it because you signed it as the council group. The same with approving, you know, minutes of a meeting that you weren't at, you still vote on them as a ministerial responsibility.
All good? Any other questions? Discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? No? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Now, we'll move on to item number 2-2016, Adoption of Town Council Rules.
I move we adopt these Town Council rules for this year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? No? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Unanimous? So far, so good. As Chair, I have to say, it's going pretty smoothly. Item number 3-2016, Appointment of the Finance Committee. The caucus had recommended Kathryn and Ray as Chair and the Council as a whole to serve as the Finance Committee. Do I have a motion? Jessica?
I move that we accept Kathryn and Ray as Chairman and the Council as a whole to serve as the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes. And we'll move on to item number 4-2016, Appointment of an Ordinance Committee. The caucus recommends Caitlin Jordan as Chair and Sarah Lennon and Jessica Sullivan as the members. Do I have a motion? Yes, Jessica?
Yes, I'd like to move to divide the item and to separate the election of Chairman from the body as a whole. I didn't support Counselor Jordan as Chairman, and I'd like to remain consistent with that.
Do I need a second to move to...
Up to you.
As to whether to accept that motion, or whether to take a second on it?
I'm not sure what the rule is on a motion to divide a question. Do you know, Deborah? Whether or not it requires a second to divide an issue?
I think it would.
Yeah?
That's my, that's the will of the Council.
I will take a second on that, if anyone would like to move it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of dividing that? All in favor of dividing that motion? Opposed? That motion does not pass. We'll move back to the initial, which is item 4-2016. Do I have a motion? Yes, Counselor Lennon?
I move that we appoint Caitlin Jordan as Chairman and Sarah Lennon and Jessica Sullivan as members of the Ordinance Committee for this year.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Counselor Garvin. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Just one? Thank you. We will move on to item number 5-2016, Appointment of an Appointments Committee. The caucus recommended Patricia Grennan as Chair and Jamie Garvin and Kathryn Ray as members. Do I have a motion? Yes. Thank you, Caitlin.
I move that we appoint Patty Grennan as Chair with Jamie Garvin and Kathryn and Ray as members.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. Next item is listed as a consent agenda that we consider items numbers 6 through 18-2016 on block. The Council Chair will entertain a single motion to approve items 6 through 18. However, any counselor may request for any item to be removed from the consent list and separately voted. Do I have a motion? Yes.
I move that we accept items 6 through 18 as a consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? All in favor? That motion passes. Thank you. So, I just have to ask a procedural question now. We voted to consider that on block. Does that mean that we voted to...
It's all done.
Move all of those items?
Yeah.
Wonderful. So, now, we are moving...
You do need to sign the Code of Ethics. You have the sheet, Deb?
Correct. Great. Do we have multiple copies? No? Just one? Just one? Okay. Shall I start?
Sure.
We'll go in either direction. Hand that back to you, and you can send it in that direction. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. This says, "All witnessed by..." Thank you. And we'll move on to item number 19-2016, The Appointments to Boards and Commissions. Would the new Chair of the Appointments Committee like to introduce this item?
Yes. Thank you. So, in October, we posted openings for asking community members to apply to different boards and commissions for vacancies, or as well for reappointment to the different committees in the town. We held in November three nights of interviews, and it was actually a really great turnout. We had over 31 people come out to interview for the positions, with only 21 positions available. So, in a minute, I will present each of the people who we have nominated on the slate. But I do want to say to those who we were unable to put into the committees that, please come back. We had an incredible, again, as I said, turnout, and also a great opportunity to meet some incredible people from our community who are talented and committed to this community. But unfortunately, we just didn't have enough places for them at this time. I guess that's a good problem to have, and hopefully, the next time around, that we can find placements for them. So, would you like me just to go through and read, or make a motion at this point?
I think we probably, I'm guessing everyone received a copy of the full list in their packet, so if you'd like to, you can read it, or we can just have a motion to accept the full slate as...
Is that fine? Okay, great. So, I would like to move that we accept the slate as you received it for all the different boards and commissions for the 2016 year, with appointments beginning December 31 and ending on different terms that are listed here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Jamie's? Do we have any discussion? Any questions? Yes, Caitlin?
Oh, just given the Code of Ethics that we just signed, I do have to disclose that I am distantly related to one of the recommendations, Carol Ann Jordan, and we are, he's a close personal friend.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other discussion? Terrific. All in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? No, that is unanimous. Great. We'll move on to item number 20-2016, The Purpuda Club Annual Licenses. Yes, Jessica?
Yes, Chair McCoslin. I need to disclose that I'm a member of the Purpuda Club. I don't feel that that would impede my ability to make an objective decision regarding their license.
Thank you. Does anyone need to weigh in on that? I agree with you. Thank you for disclosing it. I don't see any conflict there. Great. Could I have a motion? The proposal is to approve the annual malt, finesse, spirituous, mobile service bar, and special amusement permits for the Purpuda Club located at 300 Spurwink Avenue. Yes, Sarah?
I propose we approve the annual malt, finesse, spirit, and mobile service bar, special amusement, at the Purpuda Club at 300 Spurwink Avenue.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Wonderful. Thank you. No one opposed? Do we have to sign something on that? Well, we'll do that after the meeting. Great. Thank you. Next up, we have item number 21-2016, The Analysis of the Spurwink Church Intersection. Michael, would you like to introduce this item?
One of the Town Council goals for this calendar year that's about to end was to look at a couple of intersections in town, and one in particular is the intersection properly known as the Spurwink Church Intersection. It's the intersection of Spurwink Avenue and Bowery Beach Road, I believe, but it's kind of odd the way the road's named Route 77. Anyway, I think anyone that travels through that intersection knows it feels uncomfortable, and that probably relates to why the Council asked for a goal. We did ask Town Engineering Firm, Sebago Technics, to look at it, and the, are we warming up? And, I'm trying to stall while the thing warms up. And the agenda indicates that Steve Harding, the Town Engineer, is going to be present to review and present the analysis, but I understand you're not doing that.
No, I'm a state senator.
You got to go to the mic there.
Michael's correct. I'm not going to present it. I have Steve Sawyer, who's a transportation engineer, much more knowledgeable about such things. But I did want to introduce myself and reintroduce myself to some of you folks. My name's Steve Harding. I've been a Town Engineer for a long time, and I worked for Sebago Technics, so...
And just while Steve's coming up, I think it should be mentioned that when he was earlier in his career with Hunter Blue Associates and T.Y. Lynn back in the early '90s, he was actually the Town Engineer before Steve, a few years back, in the late '80s, early '90s, maybe?
I think so. You're right. You have an excellent memory. That's right. That is true. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Now, you have to tell me one more thing, because I'm not technologically savvy to apples, but how do we, is it just...
Is it coming?
Oh, look at that. How about, oh, now I have to put in that, excuse me just a minute here while we... There we go. All right. Awesome. Okay. Great. Well, it's my understanding that you did, as part of your packet, get a copy of a memorandum that we prepared for Bob Nelly, your Public Works Director, on this particular intersection. He asked us back in September to take a look at it from a safety and an operational standpoint, and we made, we produced, we did just that. We went into the field and made some observations of how things, as we saw them, reacted. We also did some background research on crash histories at the intersection to see if, in fact, there was anything there that would lead us to believe we needed to make some improvements. And that led us to the preparation of a memorandum, and I'm going to go through some of the findings that we came up with based on our observations, and then look for the Council to give us some direction as to where we might go from here. As for those of you that did have a chance to read the memo in completeness, you will notice, or you should have noticed, that we did not make any recommendations. It was really just a presentation of what we saw as facts, and with the expectation that indeed, tonight's conversation might lead us to some follow-up action based on what your pleasure is. But some of the things that we noticed really is, there's a limited sight distance as you go around the curve. The curve's fairly sharp, as those of you who travel it on a routine basis. It's not graded correctly in terms of if you're heading towards Scarborough as you drive around the outside of the curve. The road is actually banked to the wrong direction. So, that makes you feel uncomfortable, I think was the word that was used earlier. As you're driving it, the centrifugal force of your car actually makes you feel like you're going to sort of run off the road. And actually, I think Bob, although nothing has happened recently, but he mentioned that at some point, someone actually did go around the outside of the curve and hit the church, which is on the outside of the curve, and maybe that had some contributing factor to that happening. The other thing that he pointed out was the sight distance. The church is fairly close to the roadway, and there's the grass parking lot across the, across Bowery Road, and so pedestrians, when they come to a service or to some activity at the church, park in the parking lot, and then they walk across the road. And the sight distance for people coming from Scarborough is obstructed by the church, and there was a concern for safety of pedestrians crossing from the parking lot over to the church. So, we asked if we'd take a look at that as well. So, the first thing we did, and typically do in a situation like this, is we take a look at the documented crash history. And for that, what we do is, there's a resource at the State of Maine, the Maine Department of Transportation maintains an excellent database of crash history all across the state. And what we asked them to provide us was a report that would indicate to us what the history looked like between their most recent three-year window. And that would, that, as it turned out, happened to be between 2012 and 2014. And as you can see, this diagram here is a representation of what appears to be four crashes that occurred during that four-year period. Now, if you dig into the report a little bit more in detail, you'll find out that there was one crash in 2012, there were no crashes in 2013, and there were three crashes in 2014. And of the three crashes that occurred in 2014, I've highlighted three of them. One of them was over here, and this happened to be a person making a left-hand turn from Bowery Beach onto Spurwink Avenue and ran into a bicyclist. And that particular incident actually incurred an incapacitating injury to the bicycle person, according to the accident report. There also was another accident whereby a motorcycle was involved, and that, the motorcycle person actually got hit by someone coming in the other direction. So, those are probably the two worst incidents that involved an injury. The other one, the other two accidents, one was a vehicle that was actually coming from Scarborough, making a left-hand turn, and actually ran into somebody sitting right here at the stop sign. It's, sometimes, it's hard to understand how things happen, but that's what the accident report actually said. And then, the fourth accident was somebody in the wintertime just lost control of the vehicle as they were going around the corner and actually ended up in a snowbank. So, those are the four crashes. Now, to understand crash history and the significance of crash history, there are two factors that the State of Maine uses to quantify the severity of the safety problem at an intersection. One of them is the number of crashes that occur in the most recent three-year period, and that threshold is eight. So, here we have four. The state uses a factor of eight in order to elevate it to what's considered a high-crash location. The second criteria is an indicator called critical rate factor, and that's a measure of how often crashes occur at this intersection versus other similar accidents or other similar intersections across the state. So it's a measure of relativity. And it turned out, you have to have a critical rate factor greater than one. Or in other words, it has to have a preponderance of safety concerns greater than what the average intersection might be that looks like this across the state. Here, we have a critical rate factor of 1.58. So it meets that threshold, but you have to meet both thresholds in order to be considered a high-crash location. So in terms of the state's eyes, this is not a high-crash location, and it's just one that has some concerns and has a crash history, but would not elevate to the point where they would suggest that it needs to be on their radar screen to do something about. Just a little bit of history there in terms of how this relates from a crash history point of view, because sometimes that's tied to eligibility for funding, at least from the state point of view. Just a couple of photographs here. This is what you see when you're coming from Scarborough. The church is on the left, the curve to the right. The important thing here is you notice that there's a plowed field on the right and the vegetation is fairly low as you're approaching from the north. But if you look in, down around the end of the intersection, over here, you can see the curve. Bowery Beach Road is actually over here. But the ability to see cars coming in the other direction is really blocked by this vegetation, dense vegetation, which is right here. That, in our view, whoops, becomes a bit important. If you look in the other direction, it's fairly open. Again, this is looking north, and the church is here, obviously. And the field, this is a plowed field that is used by, I believe it's the Sprigs, in the summertime for agricultural purposes. So what we took a look at was, as I said, one of the issues we thought was sight distance and the ability to see oncoming vehicles. We took a look at available sight distance at this intersection, if you're driving, coming, particularly coming from the Scarborough end and looking around that curve, as I indicated by that photograph, where the trees do obstruct your sight distance. And we came up, looking at design guidance, these are values that are recommended for design of new construction. And they don't necessarily, if you're dealing with existing conditions, you know, lots of times will sort of modify kind of things a little bit. But if you were building a new road here, these are some of the distances that you might try to achieve in order to make the visibility of the drive through the intersection as safe as possible. So what I've done here is, this is an aerial view of the intersection. Again, Scarborough end is over here, Cape Elizabeth's over here, and Spurwink Avenue is here. So the first thing we did was, we said, all right, if you're approaching from, if you're approaching from Scarborough and you happen to be, oh, maybe a couple hundred feet north of the intersection, what you'll see here, this is the maximum decision sight distance. This is a line that if you're driving, you'd really like to see all the way over to here. This is what we call an average sight distance, decision sight distance measurement, and this would be a stopping sight distance measurement. Or if you had to stop your vehicle because you noticed something in the road, kind of, how much distance do you need to be able to see that? And again, this is going at 35 miles an hour, which is the posted speed out there. So basically, just keep in mind, there's a lot of, there's a need for visibility across the field in order to open up what you see in advance of the intersection, primarily before you make your left-hand turn to see if, in fact, somebody is coming. Because you don't necessarily need to stop, you might actually be coming up here and just slow down to 10 to 15 miles an hour and make the turn. But again, you have to be wary of, is there anybody coming in the other direction as you're trying to make that maneuver? So if the car happens to be a little bit closer to, as you get, approach the intersection, get a little bit closer, again, those particular distances that we're looking at tend to maneuver around and, again, pass through those sight lines, all seem to pass through that vegetation. And if we get up to the intersection itself, basically, if you're, I'm sorry, actually, let's go back. If you're sitting at the intersection, you really have fairly good sight distance for oncoming vehicles, but you don't really achieve that until you get right on top of the intersection and you're ready to make your maneuver. So if we take the average distances, not the maximum, not the minimum, but we pick an average distance, what we end up with is this yellow dashed line here. And this is sort of a, boy, this would be a preferred area of clear sight interior to the intersection. And if you had that, if that was wide open and visible, then indeed the safety of making a maneuver to the left or passing around the intersection would actually be at maximum. Now, that's interesting because if you, actually, if you look, this blue line here represents the existing right-of-way or the public ownership of land. So what we're talking about is the ability to be able to view across the agricultural field or across property that you don't own. And so that opens up a whole situation of, do we engage the property owner in terms of possibly acquiring a clearing easement, which might mean the removal of some vegetation to open up the sight lines? But again, you need to have some conversations with the property owner because you don't own the land. So that's the, sort of, the purpose of this sort of exercise. So if we're going to deal with sight distance, indeed, it may, in fact, involve some vegetation clearing on the inside of the curve, and that happens to be on land that you don't own. Now, as we said, another problem with this intersection is the gradient or the cross-slope of the road as you're going around the curve. Now, what we did here is, we said, well, the posted speed on Bowery Beach Road or Route 77 is 35 miles an hour. So if we were designing this as a brand-new roadway, 35 miles an hour would suggest that the radius of this curve that would represent going around the corner needs to be 340 feet. That would give you this alignment. And as you can see, the existing alignment is up here because the existing alignment, the curve radius, is about 150 feet. So it's much sharper than what would be proposed if you were designing this as a new road. So we said, all right, if we went one step further and said, okay, let's suggest that maybe we try to achieve this 340-foot curve, smooth it out a bit, and then create a cross-slope across both travel lanes. So if you're heading to Scarborough, it's actually going to be banked in the right direction. What does that really mean? Well, as I said before, this blue line, which is here, represents the limit of the land that you own. So what we would suggest is probably you would move, want to move that line to something that looks like this. And the area between the blue line of what you own now and the red line of what you might want to own is about 3,000 square feet. And the limit of the agricultural land is actually here. So it's possible that you could approach your butter and say, gee, would you be willing to sell us 3,000 square feet? And it appears that that acquisition might not impact their particular operation of the plowed field because it doesn't look like they're using that area. But again, we're sort of moving to a place of acquiring land and in a, you know, obviously, I don't know that you'd be willing to do this on an eminent domain thing, but it was, if there is a, if there's a willing party, willing seller, willing buyer, maybe you would, you'd be interested in making some improvements on the alignment. Now, that's not to say that, well, the other advantage of that, let me say that, if you did that, then basically what happens is this intersection or Spurwink actually gets pushed out a little bit further. So as you're stopped at the stop line, you actually now can see beyond the church, and people can see you better. So that's a good thing in terms of safety and visibility here, on operations here. The other thing is that by doing so, the other point I talked about was the pedestrian access from the grass parking lot over here to the church itself. Today, there's a break in the fence right here. And what I didn't show you is that if we go back, yeah, and it's, I'm sorry, it's a little hard to see here. This, the break in the fence is about here and the cross, so people cross right here. Well, it's pretty close to where this stop bar is or where vehicles are stopped. So they're almost hidden by the church. So if we were to change the alignment, I think we pick up, you know, 25 to 30 feet or so, and you could maintain that crosswalk at the same location. If you decided not to realign the road, then we're suggesting that maybe the crosswalk gets pushed further away from the intersection, just to give people who are making that turn a little bit of room to react to a pedestrian crossing there. And then, obviously, the other thing to do is to actually paint a crosswalk, which I don't believe exists today. So that would sort of indicate, again, to drivers that indeed there could potentially be some pedestrian activity and that they need to be wary of. So, so where are we? I think the issue is, on one end of the spectrum, you could realign the road, create an opportunity for a smoother crossing around the corner on Bowery Beach Road. You'd have the ability to super-elevate it, as we term it, or bank it in the proper direction so that it would be, it would feel comfortable going around the road. And that could be, the radius of the curve would be designed at what we thought was an appropriate speed. Now, again, it's posted at 35 miles an hour. What I showed you was 35 miles an hour. Depending upon the receptiveness of the butter, we could actually tighten that up a little bit. Maybe we make it for 30 miles an hour or make it for 25 or so. So you've got a little bit of flexibility there. But the one end of the spectrum on terms of expense would be realignment of the road itself. If you didn't want to do that, that doesn't mean that you can't do something. If you wanted to leave the roadway at the existing horizontal alignment, maybe we could change the superelevation of the outside of the curve so that indeed it was banked in the right direction, so you felt a little more comfortable. We could try that. We could put some centerline rumble strips so that if you happen to vary around the curve, you know, there's a reason, hey, slow down. We could add, there are some approach signage there on those curves. They're, they're yellow and black signs that indicate 30 miles an hour going around the curve, even though they're advisory indications. Whereas the posted speed is 35, they are advisory plaques for 30. We could make those actually dynamic, and you may have seen those. The sign will tell you what your speed is and indicate what, you know, the advisory speed is suggested. So you have some way to gauge yourself that indeed, maybe you're going a little too fast. There were also, when we were out in the field, we were talking about how could we protect the church, particularly since the road is on the, is on, the church is on the outside of the curve, and it had been hit before. And one of the things we noticed is there's a beautiful stone wall that lines the cemetery out in the rear. It's possible that you could extend that wall maybe down the face of the church and provide some sort of protection to the building itself. And then, as I've already talked about, you know, maybe there's some movement in the crosswalk location just from a safety point of view. So in short, or actually in long, and I'm sorry for taking quite a long time to go through this, we looked at a variety of things. I think you have a variety of possibilities that you can consider, and they range all the way from very simple and inexpensive to very costly and expensive. And some of them would involve additional land and some of them would not. So we're here to, or prepared to sort of take your direction at this point, and then we will continue further and maybe report back when we, when we have more concrete solutions. But I think what we're looking for is a little bit of guidance from you folks in terms of how big an issue do you see this is in terms of what your expectations were? So with that, I will entertain any questions?
Thank you.
I did just want to say one more thing. When we received the report, we provided a copy of it to the Sprague Corporation. We have not entered into a dialogue with them, figuring the council ought to have a chance to see the report. But the initial email that came back was, you know, an indication of willingness to work with us.
Great. Thank you. Questions? No?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes?
Thank you very much for presenting that. It was very informative. The current striping, the current sign, stop sign and striping on Spurwink Avenue as you approach the intersection is, has always puzzled me. And if memory serves, the stop bar that's painted on the pavement is a fair distance from the actual stop sign, which causes confusion, I think, among drivers. There's, there's the stop bar and then there's an actual posted stop sign, I think.
And the stop sign is further?
Exactly. So what happens, I think a lot of people stop at the bar or maybe roll through it and then inch up to the sign and they're not sure. Well, I already stopped back there. So I think, I mean, one of the things I would say is adding some consistency to that would.
Yep.
I'm curious also what you observed about other signage, either along 77 or along Spurwink as you approach the intersection, that would indicate dangerous curve or, you know, any of those other types of things that might alert a driver to, you know, an.
Again, there are, to my knowledge, I don't remember that there's much else. There is a sign down here as you're heading southerly, I always get this wrong backwards. And there's a sign over here as you're heading northerly that in advance of the curve, they're yellow and black, they have a curve sign, and they have an advisory speed plaque that indicates 30 miles an hour. But that's basically it. My suspicion is that, you know, this, like many coastal routes, has lots of curves and turns and, you know, people here are accustomed to driving it, which is probably why we don't see more of a history in terms of crashes than actually seems to be documented.
I just.
Yes?
If I could mention, you know, there's options listed on the screen, but, you know, one option is simply to deal with the property owners, you know, can we work together on the brush and, you know, clear away a little bit to make it a little bit safer? That's, that's an easy.
Exactly.
Solution. Secondly, PACS, which is the Regional Funding Agency, once every two to three years requests, you know, do projects be able to look at and whatever. The next deadline is January 22nd. You know, if we, if we did that and tried to get in the pipeline for them to do the other piece, you know, it still wouldn't happen for like four years the way, if, the way PACS works. Some things take even longer than that. So, you know, I think that's an issue is, you know, do you want us to get into that pipeline? And, but I think even before that is, do you want us to enter into a dialogue with the property owner?
Yes, Sarah?
I'm not sure if we're deciding this right now, are we? Are we going to vote on whether, or are we going to have further discussion about all these options? How are we going to settle it?
There's no motion on the table. It's just a report this evening. It's not intended, but.
Because I guess my thoughts are that we could do this in a gradual fashion. We could cut down the brush, assuming the Sprigs are open to that. We could put up a couple just sign, basic signs that cost almost nothing that say, dangerous curve ahead, please slow down, whatever. We could, I like that crosswalk idea a little further down, and we could line up the stop crossbar with the stop sign and observe for a year. You know, if there's zero crashes and zero incidents, well, that's, that seems like a really good thing. If it, if it doesn't change or it gets worse, then we can sort of go, in other words, we can address this incrementally, right? We might as well start with inexpensive.
Absolutely.
Test it out. I mean, I just think those basic things you mentioned might go a very long way. I don't, I don't recall ever seeing a sign there that sort of says, hey, be careful.
Well, part of it may be that the vegetation is sort of obstructing the sign. So maybe it's time to do a little clearing around the sign, too. But you're absolutely right. I don't disagree with your.
And it's great to have this report because then we know exactly what our next step would be, should that one not be affected.
The only comment I would make, and I think Mike is probably aware of this, the PACS process that he described does provide monies for the regional communities for projects similar to this. What I'm fearful, though, with this particular project is since we don't have enough crashes, then it's not going to elevate to the point where they would fund it. So that may be a path that you might not seek any return. If you did want to go to a bigger project or a reconstruction project, what I would suggest is a program that the state also maintains, and actually, PACS has their own version of it, too, which is just starting this year. And it's called a municipal partnership. version of it, too, which is just starting this year, and it's called a municipal partnership agreement. And this is a program whereby the state, without federal funds, but its state-only money, will give you 50% the cost of the project. So you put up 50%, the town puts up, I mean, the state puts up 50%, and you do your project. And there's a maximum of $500,000 that they will give you. So they, you know, for a project under $1 million, you get it 50 cents of the dollar. I can speak from experience. We've done two of those in South Portland recently, and I've done one in Kennebunk and one in Kittery also. Excellent project, zero administrative function, and I probably shouldn't say that too loudly, but from a state-run project, there basically is no state involvement. So it's, it's truly a municipal-run program, and it's very cost-effective and it's very efficient. But you're talking about projects that are several hundred thousand, and you're going to put in, you know, 150,000 or whatever it is, you know, that you may choose to do. And I think that the council that talked about taking a more measured approach, if there's no real sense of urgency, may make more sense than going forward and spending lots and lots of money. But that program does exist, and you should be aware, they're taking applications for, I think 2016 is spoken for, but 2017 is available. And they have $7 to $9 million that they dole out every year. And most of the communities that take advantage are in southern Maine because they happen to be the more communities with a little bit more affluence and, and ability to pay. So that's something to consider.
Thank you. Patty, yes?
I guess I want, maybe two parts here. With the PACS program, maybe you can talk a little bit more about what that process is involved, if there's costs involved. Is it just something that you could put out there and let happen to see if it's something that we did get this, especially if we're going to stage this and starting with just some signage and moving a crosswalk so that if, in fact, we did decide that there was an issue, we could go about that? And as well, could you do, with looking at the, the MPI program, I mean, could, is there something that you could do, like dual tracks? Can you apply to both? And is there something?
No, because they get really mad if they give it to you and you don't use it.
Just, you know, I think that's the real issue is do, you know, we, it strikes me we ought to be doing exactly the things that Sarah indicated, the, the low-hanging fruit, you know, provided that the property owner's willing to work with us on it since most of it's on their property. And then, you know, and the issue is, do we want to start down the, the road of looking at the geometry of the intersection and the, the fact that the curve goes the wrong way and all that? And, you know, that, that will take time. And that, and, you know, as Steve indicated, the municipal partnership route is, is, is the route to go for funding because it'll, PACS just has so little money available for federal road reconstruction monies, it's practically nonexistent. We do in no way compete with the Scavengers and the Portlands and the South Portlands.
Okay. Kathy, did you have a question?
I was just wondering if any of your research had anything to do with walkers and/or runners? Because I know at least one individual who said they felt they'd had a bunch of near-misses with cars in that area, and I don't know if you.
We didn't make any observations the day we were there in terms of that use as a, as a jogging trail or, I mean, do people, are you saying people are actually running along the edge of the road?
Yes, yeah.
Bowery Beach Road?
Right, right.
Well, it's pretty narrow.
You run along Bowery Beach and up and down.
Yeah, there's not much of a shoulder there, so I can appreciate that it probably is a, you know, nerve-wracking situation, which, again, the, the more sight distance you have there, particularly around curves and stuff, the better you're going to be. But it, there's, it is not a paved shoulder, you know, with a fair amount of distance to get off the edge of the road. And the, the same would be for bicyclists, I'm sure.
Right, right.
And we did have an accident with, you know, a bicyclist there, so.
Thank you.
Yes, Jane.
I was actually just going to follow up on that point. So it was curious to me in reading the briefing materials, and you addressed it just now, too, that two of the four incidents involved, you know, their multi, multimodal transportation as opposed to just vehicles. So I was just wondering, in your experience and opinion, if there was anything sort of additional to be gleaned from, from that that made it unique that 50% of the four incidents were?
Well, one of the things I would, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of odd, or, I mean, it's really interesting if you've ever read, read a police accident report, what, what the officer will put down on, you know, what they tell him, what the officer will actually write down. Sometimes it's kind of interesting. And then, you know, I'm sure they're telling it like it is, and, and it's interesting and quite, actually quite interesting what, what people will say and what happens. The one accident that occurred on September 18th, and it was actually at 4:00 in the afternoon, so you're talking about daylight in the summertime, and it was the vehicle hitting a bicyclist. And this was actually, this one over here, and this is where the bicyclist got injured. And basically, it says that Unit 1 was driving north on 77 approaching the intersection with Spurwink Road. Driver of Unit 1 stated he made a last-minute decision to make a left turn onto Spurwink Road. Driver of Unit 1 stated he slowed quickly and started to turn when he saw a bicyclist heading south on 77th intersection. At this point, the driver stated it was too late to avoid the collision. So basically, they turned, didn't see the bicyclist, and then actually had an incident with, with the bicyclist. So that, you know, whether, if they had had more, if the vegetation had been cleared and here, and they'd had more of an opportunity to see the bicyclist coming, I don't know whether that would have made a difference. It sounds like it was a last-minute decision that somebody made, and it just happened. The other one that involved a motorcycle, the motorcycle actually, if I remember right, was following, this one occurred in July at 2:30 in the afternoon. So again, we're talking about not nighttime, not wintertime, middle of the, middle of the day. Unit 2 was traveling south on 27. Unit 1 was making a left turn from Spurwink to go north on Bowery Beach. A school bus was in front of Unit Turn, Unit 2, turning right onto Spurwink Road. So a school bus was making a right turn here, and it turned out there happened to be a motorcycle following closely behind the school bus. And the person that came out of Spurwink Road saw the school bus but didn't see the motorcycle behind them, pulled out, hit. So not something that maybe is geometrically, you know, related, just kind of one of those situations.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. I'm just going to move things along because I see we still have some counselors who have some other questions. If I could just interrupt for a minute. Caitlin?
We're going to be starting a dialogue with the Spray Corp about possibly the vegetation. Maybe we could field them out at the same time about the 300 square feet. I mean, if we're going to be going after this municipal partnership monies.
Can I just, I think it's 3,000 square feet. Is that right?
3,000 square, I wrote down 3,000, sorry. 3,000 square feet. Just see what we're looking at for a number. I mean, if we can get half of it from this partnership agreement, it just, I'd be curious just to know what the number is.
So if I'm just sort of getting a sense of what council members are talking about here, what I'm hearing is there's a great deal of interest in maybe giving the manager some direction on exploring some options with the property owner, particularly when it comes to looking at the vegetation and perhaps also looking at the 3,000 square feet, exploring in a little bit more detail the opportunity for PACS funding, and also, I think, more interest in looking at moving the crosswalk back and perhaps looking at dynamic signage. Those are, I think, the incremental steps that you were talking about, Sarah, and that longer term, if we have an opportunity or if we see a need to do something more because we're having more crash reports or more incidents, then it's time to revisit either the grading or the, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong word.
Horizontal curvature, yeah.
Yes, horizontal curvature. Thank you. Does that sum it up? Anybody else have anything else that they'd like to add to that discussion? And, yes, Jessica?
Yeah, I think, I like Sarah's ideas. I think that what, and as the town manager mentioned, the low-hanging fruit, I personally like to see us take that approach first.
The incremental approach?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Mike, does that give you enough direction to get started? And do we need to do something else with the report? Do we need to give you any?
Acknowledge receipt of the report.
Okay. Wonderful. Could I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the report?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy. A second? Second. Thank you, Caitlin. Any discussion about that? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it. You bet.
Great. And we will move on to item number 22-2016, confirmation of town manager's appointment of a library director.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Chair, excuse me.
Sorry, I'll answer to either one.
I'll get used to it. Very happy to report on the library director's search process. I noticed Ruth Ann Haley in the group, a member of the, the search committee, the Ken, the, from the library trustees as well. I think everyone knows J. Sherman is retiring on January 22nd. We went through a search process, advertised in all of the national publications, lists, the, the online list, job places, and we ended up with between 30 and 40 applicants. I don't remember the exact number. But the committee, what was interesting is library trustees had gone through, like, had asked to make a list of the qualities they wanted to see in a librarian, and they had come up with a list of about 25 different qualities they wanted to see in a librarian. And then we used that list that the trustees had come up with to, to help with the prescription of, the, the job description, to help with the, the ad in the newspaper, to help with the screening in the, the first category. And then after we, we actually, we interviewed by phone, we scheduled six. We didn't actually end up talking, we ended up talking to four, and then we met two in person. And then we actually went through, and we, we went through all of these different qualities and say which of the candidates met this the best. And it was, it was a good process. In, in my view, the, the committee was very actively engaged. We, we ended up, as I mentioned, with two finalists, both were very qualified. Kyle Nugabauer, everyone's going to have trouble with the pronunciation, and ended up as, as the choice. I was happy, and the way this works is the council, under the charter, is the manager makes the appointment and the council approves. We always get into this issue with, with all these is, you know, well, you've already announced it, you know, isn't this a foregone conclusion? The problem is if you don't announce it, then you don't have stuff, if someone knew something about this person, they wouldn't have a chance to come forward and say it, you know, unless you, you announce the person. So I think the best thing is to get it out there. And, you know, the good news is, you know, we did a criminal background check, we checked out the references, all those things. Everyone is, is full of praise for Kyle. Currently, the, works for the Walker Memorial Library for the city of Westbrook. Before that, he was the library director of a small library in, in Iowa. Philly young guy. We, you know, we're not allowed to ask the age, but, you know, you Google, you find out those things. But anyway, I, I think he's going to be a, a good fit for the library. He is someone that, you know, I think we, we can mold to, to really, you know, meet the expectations of what the building committee has discussed over the last few years, what the committee has discussed, what the trustees have discussed, what they, the direction they want to see the library going in. And I think he, he's got all the ingredients, all the bones to get us there. And I think he'll be a, a great library director for us, and I'm happy to recommend him for approval. And I don't know if Ruth Ann was on the committee, if she wants to add anything.
Can you come up to the?
I really just came in support of Kyle. It was a great process that Mike kept us all on track, so organized. But he, you know, we expected, I don't know what, you know, when we first put out the ad. We got applications from Arizona to Egypt and Canada and all over the place. And who knew we would get some guy from Westbrook? It was kind of surprising, but I think he'll be a great fit. He's a really nice guy, and he's delighted to be here. So I think you'll be very pleased, and I look forward to having you all come and meet with him. We open first part of February, and there'll be a lot of opportunity to come in and, and meet the new director.
Thank you.
Would be happy to answer any questions, if you may have.
No questions? Do we have a motion? Yes, Jessica.
I move that we accept the town manager's appointment of a new library director.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? Yes, Jessica.
I'd just like to thank the town manager and the library search committee for all their work.
Committee was fun to work with.
That's great. My thanks as well to the committee and to the trustees and to the manager. And any other comments, discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? Nope, that's unanimous. You're welcome. And we will move on to item number 23-2016. You're looking at me? Did I say?
Yeah, I've updated the agenda, yeah.
Oh.
You got the right one?
No.
Yeah.
Apparently, I don't. I'm glad you brought that. Okay. Acceptance of gifts?
That's right.
Okay. It is proposed to accept gifts?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Deborah handles that one.
Okay. Deborah, did you want to introduce that item?
Sure, I'd be pleased to. It's this time of year that we collect from the different departments gifts that have been provided for the, to the community in the last year. These are both in-kind and financial donations. They range anywhere from local fuel assistance to, we had some filming, Fun Day fireworks donations, police department, museum at Portland Headlight, the library. There was donated volunteer labor and share of materials for the Winnicke Woods Bridge construction project, and from Mitchell Associates illustrations for land use amendments, and a pet waste station. So again, very varied contributions to the town, and we certainly recognize and thank folks for that. We'll be in order for you folks to accept these gifts this evening.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to accept those gifts? Yes, Patty?
Sure. I move that we accept the gifts received in 2015, and we do that with appreciation.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Second. Thank you, Caitlin. Any discussion? I agree, very nicely put, accepted with great appreciation. Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous. And we will move on to item number 24-2016, reuse suggestions for former library building. And would the manager like to introduce that item?
Be, be happy to. The town council authorized a month ago me to go out and to, to survey the municipal departments and others for possible public use of the building. The, the reason public use is because we'd had a, a survey in the tax bills that indicated that, that that was the preferred use by citizens, 52% of that indicated. As a result of that, you know, we've got a number of suggestions. The school department submitted a fairly comprehensive proposal for, I think they call it a school hub, that you've received a couple of emails from those interested in having a senior citizen center there. And, and then there were a couple of other suggestions that if the historical society, you know, were to move, what ought to happen with, with the other space. The, we received a, an email from CF, the Capable of Education Foundation, who were interested in possibly using it, their offices as well. You know, I've just merely gathered the recommendations and forwarded them to you. And, you know, obviously, I think you, you need some sort of a committee or a working group, either of the whole council or, or as a subset, that, you know, comes back with a recommendation as to what you want to do. You might want to engage in a dialogue as well with the school department since, you know, they, they had a, a specific, concrete proposal. But, but I realize in doing that, you know, it's, you also have the senior citizen group that wants to then, but, you know, but the, the senior citizens, you know, the, the council is going to, you know, look, needs to look at that report, and, you know, we, we need to have a dialogue with the school department. And now that, you know, they, they just had their caucus and determined their offices for next year, it's an opportunity to engage with them to discuss overall, you know, we had talked about community services and the role of seniors in that, but that, you know, awaiting the, the change in leadership at the school department has sort of held up that, that dialogue. But now that, you know, I see they just came downstairs, their caucus is over, you know, there's an opportunity now for the council chair and others to engage with the school department. So, you know, my, you know, I don't know if you want to do anything specific other than to acknowledge your seat of the report. You know, there may be people here that wish to speak on this. You know, there may be people here that wish to speak on this as well.
Should I be asking for a motion first?
Whatever you like.
Okay. Could I have a motion first for either acknowledging receipt of the report, or for something more extensive, either acknowledging the report and moving it to a workshop, or having another, as the manager suggested, a subcommittee or a working group working on that? Yes, Sarah?
I move that we acknowledge the, receive, with, with gratitude, receiving the report for the suggested uses of the former library building. And I think we should just all do it in a workshop, but maybe that shouldn't be part of my motion, or should it? Let's just receive it and then have a, pardon my motion. I, I, I move that we gratefully receive this, and we move it to one of our workshops. So we have a little more time to talk.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Kathy? Thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion? I need to ask a procedural question. Is this the time that we have a motion on the table, that we invite the public to comment on that?
Do what any kind I want to.
Thank you. Would anyone like to comment? No? Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion from the council members?
I would like to say, you know, you keep getting emails on some of these topics, and I would strongly suggest, I think you got a workshop the first week of January, maybe? This would be.
Yes, the sixth.
Good to put on that workshop.
Okay. That's great. So we have a motion on the table that we move this to workshop, and it sounds to me like the January 6th, which I don't believe we have an agenda for yet, so perhaps that is the right meeting to have that discussion at. Any other discussion right now on that motion? No? All in favor? Wonderful.